The Parker app is also available in other parts of the city, including downtown LA and Hollywood. LEDWP and law enforcement officials have a warning for residents about a scam targeting LEDWP customers. As Cindy San Luis reports, it starts with an urgent phone call from an impostor and ends with some residents losing quite a bit of cash.
There's a million scams in a big city like Los Angeles, but here's one that's been particularly egregious, and it's been a scam that's growing for the past six months or so.
Officials from the LAPD and the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power gather outside the LAPD Administration Building downtown to announce that impostors posing as LEDWP personnel have been contacting customers by phone, informing them they are behind in payment of their bill, and threatening immediate service termination unless they pay and pay now with a cash card.
The victims in this case go out, buy a cash card, turn around and call up the phone number and turn that money over to these scammers. The money's gone and the victims soon realize that they didn't pay their bill, they just ended up losing their money. We need the public to be aware that if you get a call from DWP, do not, do not act on it. Do not listen to these thugs. Do not go down to a convenience store and purchase a cash card. The DWP will never ask you to do that. You will get ample notification if you're behind in your bill.
The LEDWP says you will get at least three notifications in the mail if you're behind on your bill, and they will never ask for financial information over the phone.
If this occurs, you should hang up immediately and call 1-800-DIAL-DWP. That's 1-800-DIAL-DWP. Do not listen to these thugs that are taking advantage of you. So we want to make sure the public is aware. In addition, you can also go online at LEDWP.com and you can check your bill.
I can't stress enough that no one from the Department of Water and Power is ever going to call a customer up and demand money from them. There's a number of ways they can pay.
In fact, LEDWP personnel do not accept payment information verbally over the telephone, only through their automated system. You can, of course, also pay online, in person at a branch, or by mail.
We have been doing everything possible to get the word out not to fall for the scam. We've been putting it out in our bill inserts, we've been putting it out in the papers that go out to our customers, our ratepayers, but we still see the scam continuing and increasing.
Police say you can help stop these imposters by writing down their phone number and reporting it to the LEDWP and/or the LAPD. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
The LAPD joins a grieving mother whose son was the victim of not one, but two back-to-back hit-and-run incidents. As Rasha Goel reports, police need your help to find those responsible for taking a young life.
A $50,000 reward is being offered to help find the perpetrators of a fatal hit-and-run that killed 22-year-old Thomas Price.
He was a very hard worker and a very good boy, and he was everything to me.
The accident happened near Reseda Boulevard and Bessemer Street in the city's 2nd Council District when the young man was crossing the street. What makes this case even more outrageous, police say, was that he was hit by not one, but two cars.
It was an issue of a driver who was not cautious. He did not stop to render aid, to exchange information, to call 911 as the law requires. He did stop momentarily, but then he chose to leave the location without providing aid. 20 to 30 seconds later, a second car comes over and again runs over Mr. Price.
The first vehicle is described as a possible 1997-98 dark gray SUV with a 4-5-inch lift kit. The second car is described as a compact passenger vehicle.
If that person knows anything out there regarding what happened that night, has heard anything, if they could please come forward, my family needs closure in this.
If you have any information, please call 1-800-222-TIPS or 1-800-222-8477. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Investigators have run out of leads and hope that a monetary reward will serve as an incentive for someone to come forward with information regarding this case. A longtime spiritual leader from South Los Angeles receives a posthumous honor from the city, and the celebration was one that also served as a walk down memory lane for many in the community. City workers mount a plaque onto a light post, letting motorists and pedestrians know that they have just entered Dr. William Matthew Brent Sr. Square.
So many have contributed so greatly to our lives. For 44 years, Doc and I were married, but when we married, he was already pastor here. He kidnapped me from Dallas.
Flanked by her family, the wife of the late Dr. Brent Sr., thanked her husband's congregation for their love and support. Brent spent a large part of his adult life serving as a preacher until his retirement in 2006.
The legacy of Dr. Brent found a home right here on this corner at the Evening Star Missionary Baptist Church, where he served for some 41 years as its senior pastor.
And it was at the intersection of 59th and Brentwood Streets in South Los Angeles, right outside the church he shepherded, that plaques bearing his name were erected by the city of Los Angeles.
He and my uncle Reverend Thomas were friends. So we take this moment to thank the city of Los Angeles for laying claim to its historic memory.
The plaque dedication ceremony was intended to celebrate the life and legacy of one special man.
It's good to be reminded of our history and those who helped make the history, because times are changing.
But it also turned out to be a celebration of a special period in time for this tight-knit South Los Angeles community. Brent passed away this past October. LL Cool J, LeVar Burton, and Danny Glover. These individuals are being recognized this year by the city as part of the city's annual African-American Heritage Month celebration. Rich Samuels reports.
The mayor and city council recently kicked off this year's African-American Heritage Month with a celebration inside city council chambers and outside in city halls forecourt.
We're still at the crossroads of freedom and equality. So much has been achieved, so much has changed, so much has been realized, but so much is still left to be done.
This year's honorees included LeVar Burton, best known for his roles and roots in Star Trek: The Next Generation, and long associated with children's literacy as the host and executive producer of Reading Rainbow. Danny Glover, actor, producer, and humanitarian, has a long list of credits, including Lethal Weapon and Dreamgirls, and is recognized for his wide-ranging community activism.
When we talk about art, as Algie Davis says, "We're gonna need artists to save us from machines." We need to cultivate that art right here in those places, in those communities, as we see in those communities. And here, an African-American Heritage Month is a perfect way to recommit ourselves to that venture.
LL Cool J is a Grammy Award winner, an actor, an entrepreneur, an author, and philanthropist.
Celebrating my heritage makes me eager and excited about the opportunity to celebrate your heritage. That is, I think, something that will make the fabric of our country that much stronger yet.
The celebration continued in city halls forecourt and is only the beginning of a month-long celebration of art, culture, and community. I'm Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
The city's Department of Cultural Affairs is showcasing a full calendar of Heritage Month events at its neighborhood arts and cultural centers. The county's first female African-American lead prosecutor is also honored at city hall. The city becomes the first big city in the world to sync up all its traffic lights and city leaders usher in the Year of the Snake. These stories and more in City Beat. Mayor Antonio Villaregoza recently joined the LA Department of Transportation in flipping the switch on the final traffic intersection in the citywide signal synchronization program at the northwest corner of South Broadway and Martin Luther King Boulevard. This makes all of Los Angeles's 4,398 traffic signals part of the Automated Traffic Surveillance and Control, or ATSA, system. The completion of this program is expected to decrease average travel time for commuters throughout Los Angeles by a whole day a year and improve air quality by reducing greenhouse gas emissions.
I like to call her prosecutor with a heart.
Los Angeles County District Attorney Jackie Lacy was honored at Los Angeles City Hall by Councilmember Bernard Parks and his fellow council members as part of Black History Month. Lacy was sworn in last December as the first African-American and first female Los Angeles County District Attorney.
I realize that while being elected made history, I intend to earn my legacy. And we have already launched our priorities.
Prior to being elected LA County Prosecutor, Lacy spent most of her professional life as a prosecutor, manager, and executive in the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. The city's Department of Recreation and Parks, along with the Los Angeles Housing Department, has opened the ninth of 50 planned parks as part of the city's 50 Parks Initiative, this one in South LA at 4,600 South Orchard Avenue. The 50 Parks Initiative is a public-private partnership that will add over 170 acres of new open space to the city by transforming formerly blighted properties. Each park features decorative fencing and automatic time-lock gates that ensure that the parks close automatically after hours. Orchard Park also features some outdoor exercise equipment. Meanwhile, the city has also broken ground in the Harbor Gateway area on another 50 Parks Initiative project. The future Harbor Gateway Pocket Park will be located at the corner of Torrance Boulevard and Denker Avenue. The Los Angeles City Council, as it does every year, celebrates the arrival of the new Lunar New Year. This year is the Year of the Snake. Councilmember Ed Reyes, who represents Chinatown, shares the legend behind the Chinese zodiac.
Buddha asked all the animals to meet with, to meet him on Chinese New Year. The 12 animals that came first each had a year named after them.
The 2013 Miss Chinatown and her court were also on hand for the celebration in council chambers. And the Chinese New Year celebration moved from city hall to the streets of Chinatown as families from all backgrounds helped mark the Year of the Snake. Rasha Goel takes us to the Golden Dragon Parade.
Happy New Year, dragons, floats, and more. In commemorating this important holiday for Asian-Americans, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles hosted the 114th Annual Golden Dragon Parade and Festival in the streets of Chinatown. Joining the fun were Councilmember Ed Reyes, who represents the Chinatown District, as well as this year's parade grand marshals, Mayor Antonio Villaregoza and LAPD Chief Charlie Beck.
All of the merchants here and the community members here, thank you so much for keeping Chinatown so vibrant.
This celebration is the oldest and one of the most recognized New Year celebrations in the country. From a parade in the heart of LA's Chinatown to carnival rides and food trucks, there was a little something for people of all ages as they celebrated the Year of the Snake.
We're having a great day with our friends, and we got lots of Chinese chocolate money, and we got a little dragon, so it's a great day.
A little taste of a culture from across the world here in a city that embraces diversity. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Lunar New Year is the most celebrated holiday of the year for nearly 1.5 million people of Chinese, Korean, and Vietnamese descent in Southern California. It's a joint effort by the Dodgers' Dream Foundation, the LA 84 Foundation, and the city of LA. This program builds more parks where LA's kids can score home runs. Anna Marcos has more on the opening of the latest Dodgers' Dream Field.
A rallying cheer and another Dodgers' Dream Field goes up in LA. This one near Reseda's Rec Center marks the 25th Dream Field the Dodgers' Dream Foundation has scored in the last couple of years. The program builds baseball fields so kids in all of LA's neighborhoods can go up to bat.
My kids love it. My kids play baseball, so that just to see them, you know, interact with the Dodger players, it's a great experience for them.
We can grow young Dodger fans, hope they grow into mature and then older Dodger fans, and keep the generations growing with Dodger baseball.
Out on the field, a little baseball 101 for the kids with both Dodger hopefuls and Dodger legends, such as Ramon Martinez, Al the Bull Ferrara, and Steve Yeager.
Well, we're just teaching, trying to teach them the proper technique of just catching a ground ball.
There are fielding clinics, base-running clinics, pitching clinics, and hitting clinics. This is equal-opportunity baseball, no matter what your sex, age, size, or ability.
Baseball is our national pastime, and you guys are just now the next generation. You'll be able to learn this wonderful game.
This park is for you, kids. We built it for you. We want you to use it. The Dodgers want to see all you kids here. They want to see this park used every single day.
And with more Dream Fields on the way, expect more home runs, not just for the Dodgers, but for the kids, as more future baseball fans get the chance to play ball. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And in this week's list of things to do, the annual Lantern Festival at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, getting creative at an open studio event and free yoga at one local library. The Chinese American Museum will hold its annual Lantern Festival celebration on Saturday, March 2nd, from noon to 7:00 PM at the Chinese American Museum, located at 425 North Los Angeles Street at the El Pueblo Historical Monument across from Union Station. A hugely popular holiday in the Chinese culture, Lantern Festival occurs annually on the 15th day of the first lunar month to mark the closing of Chinese New Year festivities. Each year, Lantern Festival spotlights a Chinese-American recreation of a traditional village street fair, featuring brilliant lantern displays, Chinese opera-style face painting, kite building, acrobatic and lion dance performances, and even a spirited glow-in-the-dark Silver Dragon stage performance. Go to camla.org for more details. And libraries aren't just for reading anymore. You can even get your exercise in. The Memorial Branch Library offers free basic Hatha yoga classes on many a Saturdays. The next one will be held on Saturday, March 2nd, from 12:15 to 1:30 PM. Bring a yoga mat or heavy towel and wear comfortable clothing. The Memorial Branch Library is located at 4625 West Olympic Boulevard. You can find this and other classes by going to lapl.org and clicking on the calendar section. Meet up with friends or bring your family to Moca Grand Avenue downtown on the first Sunday of every month for an open studio workshop. Explore works of art on view through conversation and activities inside the museum and make your own work on the Sculpture Plaza. The Sunday Studio Event is appropriate for all ages and ability levels. The next one happens on Sunday, March 3rd, at 3:30 PM. Moca Grand Avenue is located at 250 South Grand Avenue downtown. The event is free and no reservations are required. Go to moca.org, click on the programs link for the drop-down menu, then select Sunday Studios. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Mr. President, before getting into the agenda, the Office of Finance recommends that items 3C and 3D be received and filed inasmuch as settlement agreements with the taxpayers have been reached.
Without objection. And I apologize to IT for not giving you the signal that we were live, but you guys are so quick on your feet that you got the council on television anyway, so my bad. I wish I could say I was testing you, but no, I forgot to signal you. I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, where were we?
Mr. President, there's been a request from a member to continue item 2 to April 2nd.
Without objection.
That brings us, items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have any cards?
We have cards on item 3, sir.
Okay, let's hold item 3. Members, specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next section.
Mr. President, items 4 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held. We should hold item 7 for a committee report that's forthcoming from the Housing, Community and Economic Development Committee.
Okay, then that should be the order. Okay, we're joined by Mr. Reyes is here. Okay, Mr. Labange.
Just, Mr. President, item 8, I just want to thank the Planning Department, the Cultural Heritage Commission for John Anson Ford Home on Normandy, who was a great board supervisor, help out at the Philharmonic Committee, and the Good Things in Arts, John Anson Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks.
Special number 5.
5 held special for Mr. Parks. Okay, let's vote on the remaining items. If we could open up the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, what's the next section?
Mr. President, items 10 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us, Mr. Parks.
Make a technical amendment on number 14, should be CD 9, not CD 8.
Okay, that's duly noted. Do we have cards?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, specials, members? Okay, let's prepare to vote.
24 special for March of Dimes Day and salute our employees.
Okay, all right, let's prepare to vote. We'll hold that item. Let us, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, unless reconsidered, the ordinances will go over for a second read.
Okay, in the event that we get to 12 members, and we should, then we will vote for reconsideration and then move those ordinances forward. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes counsel to presentations, item called special or public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange, are you ready with item 4? I mean, item, the 24? Okay, so we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Labange for presentations. For presentation, Mr. Labange, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to let you know the City of Los Angeles and its employees are extremely special over the years, and I bet Mr. Alakon...
In fact, Mr. Labange...
You coordinated for Mr. Bradley some of this in your day as a staffer.
Mr. Labange, what we'll do, we'll actually take up item 24, so we are technically on item 24. Sorry for the interruption.
Great, so here we are, March of Dimes Day in the City of Los Angeles. Franklin Delano Roosevelt, the man stricken by polio, was the one who started the March of Dimes program, which raised millions and millions and upon billions of dollars all these years to fight polio and other diseases. We're here very special today to salute because our teams are very special, the most giving city employees, the most giving public employees, and for year upon year has been the leader, neck and neck with the county sometimes, but the City of Los Angeles and its employees have contributed greatly, the March of Dimes and their walk. Zaki Mustafa is here from the Department of Transportation, and also Allison Sprankin...
Spreckin.
Spreckin, excuse me, Allison, who is the Development Manager for March of Dimes, is going to just say a few words right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange, and thank you, all of you here today in City Council. My name is Allison Spreckin. I'm with the March of Dimes, and on behalf of the March of Dimes, we would like to thank the City of Los Angeles for their dedication for 20-plus, probably going on 30 years, of fundraising in our March for Babies campaign. The City of Los Angeles has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars, which goes to fund our mission, which is to improve the health of babies by preventing premature birth, birth defects, and infant mortality. I urge you all to participate in the March for Babies again this year. Go register at www.marchforbabies.org. I stand here not just as a March of Dimes employee, but as a mission mom myself, whose child, along with Rachel Schinderman, is another one of our mission moms. Our children were saved and given the ability to thrive by the good work of the March of Dimes. So, thank you as a mom and on behalf of the March of Dimes, we really do thank you for all that you are doing, and thank Councilman Labange for his longstanding support and his support here today. I'm going to turn it over to Zaki Mustafa, who is our lead for the City of Los Angeles from the Department of Transportation.
And Zaki is a very good man, that I've known since 1987, when I was Chief Deputy Councilman Nate Holden, and Zaki and I did some remarkable things, and because of Zaki, he made me look good in the community, so...
Together, we made the city look good.
You're a good man.
And it was because of you and your initiative that we were able to do stuff that the whole nation is following and doing, which is fantastic. Well, I'm very excited, you know, along with serving the Angelenos in fixing the potholes, synchronizing the signals, putting out the fire, staffing the library, taking care of the parks, cleaning the trash, sweeping the streets, we're here to make a difference for all those babies in LA County. Did you know that over 14,000 babies are born prematurely every year, and of the 14,000, 600 don't even see their first birthday? That is really sad, and that's why we, the city employees, are here to make a difference, along with serving the city with that regular day-to-day job that we're doing. Our goal this year is to raise over $150,000. That's a lot of money, but we can do it, because anything is possible if you put your mind together and work on it. Together, we are the best, and at the same time, I'm challenging you, council members, to participate. In the past, we haven't been able to, but I challenge you to see if you can participate and raise $5,000 per office, if that's possible. So, thank you again for your support and letting us present March of Dimes to you.
Zaki, thank you as a leadership, but also we have other city employees here. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves to their department, if they would, please.
Hello, I'm here, I'm sorry, my name is Thomas Godino. I'm here to represent the Los Angeles Housing Department, and we look forward to making March of Dimes a success for the city once again. Thank you.
Don't be shy.
Morning, my name is Riza Albon. I'm representing the Personnel Department and looking forward to kicking off the March of Dimes.
Say hi to Maggie Whaley.
Good morning, my name is Shannon Cherry. I'm here with the Department of Building and Safety, and I'm excited about working with March of Dimes.
Good morning, Jean Betnarchik, Los Angeles Fire Department Battalion Commander. Thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to help out with the March of Dimes this year. It's an honor.
Well, Mr. President, this is just a few of the many city departments. Each have a coordinator. As Zaki said, if we ask each of us, identify a deputy, I know Lisa Schechter is my coordinator for March of Dimes. This is this year's very special t-shirt, and Zaki has one on there that's very special, too. Look at his muscles, Zaki.
Well, we put Zaki on camera, and man, he came to life, didn't he?
He did, he did. But he comes to life with all those stoplights he puts into the city, because he helps people. This is the man, 1-800-ZAKI-MUSTAFA. But it's really all about March of Dimes Day today. We all personally thank our employees for the extra that they give on this and their families and the exciting event. Where's the walk going to be this year?
Exposition Park.
Exposition Park, so we got it in the 9th District there on the 27th of April, which will be a fun time to not only do the walk and raise money for March of Dimes, but also visit many of the beautiful attractions at Exposition Park. So, Mr. President, may I now hereby proclaim this, March of Dimes Day in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, on that item, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to ask Daniel, Daniel Gus to come forward, and William Rodriguez Morrison to come forward. No, Daniel, I called Daniel Gus. I didn't get to you yet, Daniel Jones. There's another Daniel. In fact, though, Mr. Jones, you can come right after Mr. Rodriguez Morrison. Daniel, good to see you.
Thanks, Mr. Weston, for calling it early. I appreciate that. Every animal charity in the city, except one, pays bail fees for New Hope animals that we bail out of the shelter. We all pay these fees, except Best Friends. Best Friends is the wealthiest animal charity, maybe one of the wealthiest in the United States, but they get a pass on fees for the city. The city could make hundreds of thousands of dollars for your budget if you simply made Best Friends pay for each animal that every other charity has to pay in the city. And I'm going to tell you why Best Friends gets a pass on fees. Because Brenda Barnett's daughter is employed by Best Friends. Has she disclosed that to City Council? Brenda Barnett's daughter, she's the GM of Animal Services, her daughter earns a paycheck, I'm not sure at what level, from Best Friends. Best Friends gets a pass on hundreds of thousands of dollars of fees. Every animal charity in the city, other than Best Friends, has to report the disposition of the city's shelter animals. Why does Best Friends get a pass on reporting what happens to the city animals it takes? Because it artificially inflates the adoption rate of Brenda Barnett. Brenda Barnett benefits from an inflated adoption rate, her daughter gets a paycheck, Best Friends doesn't have to report what happens to the city animals. Best Friends is the only charity in the city that gets this benefit. We gave them a multimillion-dollar shelter, so they don't need the hundreds of thousands of dollars that could be going into the general fund. I guess I'm wondering why Brenda Barnett hasn't disclosed that her daughter earns a paycheck from Best Friends. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, no accountability on the animals, we gave them a multimillion-dollar shelter, and she's also trying to change the city's database system to the one that Best Friends uses. Dennis Zine for City Controller, Kevin James for Mayor, you guys got to fix this. There's a small fortune of money that you could have in the general fund. Thank you, Mr. Weston, for calling these early.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Morrison, followed by Daniel Jones.
Thank you. How many minutes do I have here? Oh, 2 minutes, good. Yeah, I can make this on 2 minutes. Actually, of course, you all know I'm running for LA City Council, and yesterday I was at Manuel Rojas's services, this man here. Which, actually, you know what? The integrity of this city, as a City Council member, not even one member from CD 14 was there. And that's a shame when you have a legacy of a man that represented the community in this city, that is not even elected official, to even acknowledge the family. And, you know, the one thing is, I've been always wondering of the integrity of what it is to be there at Square Circle. And the one thing is, I know there are only certain council members that I really do admire, and I'll mention their names, Dennis Zine, of course, Mr. Rosenthal, Tom Labange, and Eric Garcetti. And we all forgot what the main reason is about being a city councilman, and that is there for the community and the voice of the people. And that's one thing that we've all forgotten. And that's one thing in 6 more days that will be brought up in this coming election, when we change the focus of the LA City Council about caring again. Art Steiner used to be a great councilman that used to be there for the community and all business owners that we all forgotten. So, I would just like to say, in memory of Manuel, and shame on the City Council members that did not attend, in tribute to Manuel Rojas, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. In 6 more days, we're going to have a brand-new set of people in here that's going to raise their right hand and swear to defend the oath of the Constitution from all foreign and domestic threat. Let's have a little election cycle review, won't we? We have the Fusion Center, paid for by the state. We have SOP number 1 and number 11, well, the chief just said he can do that. Conditional officer reviews or reprimands slap on the wrist. I would notice an uptick in violence by the cops, because now they got a free pass on that one. We got Stingray out there in the middle of the whole damn community, you know, extortion. We have the chief of police violating his oath, which is where to defend the Constitution. He violated my 14th Amendment, First Clause. $32.5 million, you guys are going to give yourselves a nice juicy vacation, aren't you? Think of it more like a mayoral library full of women and jacuzzis and margaritas. Oh, yeah, your $32.5 million, these people seem to have, well, they gave themselves permission. 6 more people coming in, I don't know who's the mayor, you know, I'm not keeping track, it's not personal, but what it is, it's all about the oath. And slick willy out, slick willy in, y'all use the same language, capitalism. My father sat there and said, "No, you can't do that," and laughed. Do you know what that is? My father showed me the absurdity and the ironic part. And what the ironic part was? He let y'all do your own language. I sat there and listened to everything you ever did for 50 years. Go ahead, let the new slick willies come on in this town. The rest of you enjoy your vacation on the people's $32.5 million. $32.5 million, good bye!
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, we have 12 members present. Mr. Clerk, on the ordinances, can we vote to reconsider them?
Absolutely, sir. And for the record, those would be items 1 and 10 through 20. 1, excuse me, 1, 4, and 10 through 20.
Okay, so this vote, members, for reconsideration, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we're actually voting on the items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's move now to item 3, and we will return to general public comment. Ricardo Perez and Rafael... Rafael, I'm apologizing because I cannot pronounce the last name. I'll let you come up and do that, sir. So, if we could get Ricardo Perez, followed by Rafael. And you are, sir, or you?
I'm Rafael. I'm Rafael, sir.
Okay, then you can go first.
Okay, I'm appearing, I'm appearing for auto spot connection, placing a lien for $22,820 against the property. Yesterday, the company filed a writ of mandamus for the Superior Court to review the Department of Finance's classification of the business. What happened was, there was an audit of the business, and basically, the City of Finance decided that for 2009 to 2011, the actual car wash and detail gross sales were misclassified as general retail or laundry. We feel that that's the correct classification. The Department of Finance found that it was improper, and instead classified this gross sales as professions and occupations, which is a catch-all for all businesses that aren't specifically listed. We went through the review process, the review process was exhausted, now we filed with the court. We merely asked that the lien be postponed until we have an opportunity to appear before the court and present our arguments to the court, showing that the proper classifications of these gross sales are properly either retail or under laundry, and not professions occupations. are properly either retail or under laundry, and not professions occupations. That's pretty much it, we're not asking not to do, we're just asking for this to be postponed so that the court will have an opportunity to review it before there's a lien against the property and negatively affecting the credit of this business that operates 40 to 50 employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so is Mr. Perez, Perez?
I was just wondering if we could have staff come to the table and answer a couple of questions on this.
Okay, well, let's, let's let Mr. Perez speak first.
Yes, I'm here to request, I'm here for a tax lien on our parking lot business. There is a request for approval of the tax lien, and we're here to please request that it does not go through and gives us an opportunity to be able to talk to the Office of Finance and get this thing resolved. We don't agree with the assessments that they, that they came up with, and we did send them a letter on September 28th of 2012, which I just found out from Ms. Alicia Vega, that she has no record of them receiving it, but she should have record of them receiving it, because we sent that certified mail. So basically, what we're requesting is if you just allow us to be able to speak to them before you approve any tax lien on us, which will make it very difficult for us to continue any kind of business, so that we can take care of this matter before you even approve that lien. So that's what we're requesting today.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Koretsch, you have questions for staff?
I was just wondering if you could respond to the previous speaker on this item and address his concerns.
We're in the Office of Finance.
Alicia Vega, for the Office of Finance.
The writ that the gentleman spoke of was just filed yesterday, a day before this meeting. There's been ample opportunities in the past for him to resolve this matter, so our suggestion is, since there is no court order stopping this proceeding, is to go ahead with the lien.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alacón?
What, what are the circumstances here? We're not getting a description of what, what happened.
What happened? At this point, we're requesting the approval to file the lien, if the taxpayer...
No, but why, what?
Why?
What is the problem?
The, the problem is that the taxpayer was audited, he went through his administrative appeals process, two levels, and the audit was affirmed, and there has been no...
And how far back are we going on the audit? Is this one of those cases where we went back like 10 years and then we had to readjust it? What is the situation?
It was a three-year audit, I believe.
A three-year audit, so how long is this court process gonna take?
The court process?
Yeah.
I couldn't speak to that.
Assistant Director, Office of Finance, we would have to defer to the city attorney. Essentially, the audit process was completed, the taxpayer did have the opportunity to go through the two-step administrative appeal process. That process has been exhausted. The office is coming forward to seek the council's approval for granting of the lien request. We will certainly work with the city attorney.
Yeah, but essentially, essentially, we waited, we waited three years to collect these taxes, and now you don't want to wait for the court process to be finished?
No, that, that's, that's not, that's not correct, sir. Essentially, what, the City of Los Angeles has the authority to look back within a certain statute of limitations period.
I know we have the authority, but I question when we audit back and then we ask a business to pay for years before, and in this case, he's, he wants to continue with the opportunity to remedy the situation through the court process, and I don't know that we shouldn't wait.
We have...
I don't, I don't know this business owner for many, it's not my district, I'm just saying in general, we've run into these cases where we audit businesses for many years before, and then we, we find out that, that they can be classified differently.
That is correct, it is, it is a self-reported tax, similar to the federal income tax and the state income tax, it's a self-reported tax. We have consulted with the city attorney's office on this matter. They have indicated that the Office of Finance should proceed with requesting approval to record the lien. However, what we are asking today is simply for the approval. We will be working with the city attorney, under their guidance, as well as having a dialogue with the taxpayer to determine when would appropriate time be to record the lien. We have no intention to move forward with recording the lien unless we receive that guidance from the city attorney, that it is legally appropriate to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Koretsch, can we just proceed?
I'd recommend continuing this for 45 days.
Okay, did you hear that, Mr. Clerk? The councilperson of the district has requested a 45-day continuance, so that, that would place it where?
Pardon me, sir, before doing that, would that only be for 3A? We've had cards on items 3A and 3E. We've, we've received and filed 3C and 3D at, at the outset of our meeting, at the request of the Office of Finance. So before us still are 3A, 3B, and 3E. Again, the two speakers for public comment, one speaker was for item 3A, which is in Councilmember Koretsch's district. We've had another speaker for 3A, excuse me, 3E, which is in Councilmember Huizar's district.
Okay, Mr. Kukorian, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, and on behalf of Mr. Huizar, I'd like to ask that item 3E be continued for two weeks, please.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, and what date is that?
Two weeks brings us to March 19th, March 19th.
Mr. Reyes.
Councilman Kukorian, cover that issue, thank you.
Okay, then let's vote on the remaining item. Let's open the roll, Madam Clerk. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
So for clarification, that was, 12B will proceed, 3A and 3E are continued, sir.
Thank you. Let's go to item five.
Item five is called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item five.
Thank you. Could I have the CEO come up, please, just has a couple of questions on the item? Good morning. Natalie, could you just explain, just briefly, the one item dealing with the different rating agencies? Are they pleased with our effort on pension, are they saying we need to do more? Or are they equally concerned about our future liability? I couldn't, in reading each one, I couldn't figure out where they stood on that.
Natalie Brodsky, our office. They're impressed by what we've done so far, but they do feel that we have a long way to go, and that's why they did not, you know, upgrade the general credit.
But when they say long way to go, is that on general structural deficit or pension-specific?
I think it's a combination of both, they see pension as the biggest issue in the structural deficit.
Okay, then let me ask you one thing on page eight of your report. This is the first time I saw this, maybe I missed it on a previous report, but the 1290 funds that were used to fill a budget gap came out of the council-controlled 1290s.
Correct.
How, how did that decision get made, and do we know what percentage of each office was part of that 1.1?
That I don't know, I'll have to get back to you. My understanding is that it went through Budget and Finance Committee, and then it came to council.
So the thing is, is that if they don't use it, it goes back. But I'm concerned about how do you determine if it's used, what percentage each office gives up?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, I'll have to ask that question, ask specific question.
The other thing is, is that on page 10 of your report, it talks about LAPD overtime. Do we know what the liability for LA Fire overtime, and did they have equal concern?
I'll have to get back to councilmen, I don't know that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have your questions been satisfied? Have your questions been...
They're gonna get back on two.
So what do we, you're requesting that we...
We can move it, they're gonna get back.
Oh, they're gonna get...
They're gonna get back to me on those two items, but we didn't proceed with it.
All right. So, members, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, it's my understanding that item seven is not ready as of yet, and public comment has already been satisfied on that item in the committee. So we'll go back to general public comment with Jesus Villagrana and Letitia Villagrana. Juan Manana, Managna, and I'm sorry about that, and Leo Terrell. So if I've called you, please come forward. Hey, Alan.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Letitia Villagrana.
Good morning, my name is Letitia Villagrana.
Y vivo en Los Ángeles, en la 130, al este de la 64.
I live in Los Angeles, on 130th, 30th east of...
En Los Ángeles.
Este de qué?
En Los Ángeles, al este, al este de la 64.
East of 64.
Mi problema es, de que al lado de mi casa, en el 124...
My problem is that next to my house, on 124th...
Está levantando una construcción.
There is a construction.
Llamamos, llame al Distrito 9 para pedir información.
I called District 9 to ask for information.
A ver qué clase de construcción se iba a hacer.
Yes, to find out what kind of construction they are doing.
Y me obtuve mala información.
They gave me the wrong information.
Porque al principio me dijeron que iban a ser solamente dos casas.
At the beginning, they told me that they were building just two houses.
Y ahora resulta que están haciendo condominios de dos pisos.
And now, I found out that they are doing condominiums, and they are two floors.
Y nosotros ahí, la comunidad, no estamos de acuerdo.
And we, in the community, we don't agree with this.
No estamos de acuerdo, queremos seguridad para nuestra comunidad, para nuestros hijos.
We don't agree, because we want safety for our community and our children.
Es mi problema.
And that is my problem.
Sí, mi nombre es Juan Magaña.
My name is Juan Magaña, good morning.
Yo vivo en la 134, east 64 street.
I live on 134th east, 64.
Los Ángeles, California?
Street, Los Angeles, California.
90003.
90003.
Sí, el problema de nosotros aquí, de este grupito que venimos ahorita es...
The problem that we have, the problem that this group has, is...
Por lo que dijo aquí mi compañera, Letitia.
Same as my friend Letitia said.
Es de la construcción que están haciendo.
Es el problema about the construction.
En la 124.
On 124th east.
64 street.
64th street.
Sí, nosotros hablamos ahí, al distrito que a nosotros los pertenece.
Yes, we called to the district that belongs to our area.
Hablamos el enero 22 del 2013.
On January 22nd of 2013.
Y lo dijeron que nomás iban a ser una construcciones, que eran dos casas nada más.
They told us that they were just building two houses.
Y estamos viendo de que van a ser cuatro viviendas.
But we can see that there are going to be four, four houses.
Y es lo que nosotros no, no queremos, que se hagan esas construcciones.
And that's what we don't want, we don't want those constructions.
Entonces, por eso es que venimos para ver en qué los pueden ayudar.
That is why we are here, to see how can you help us.
Y, y eso es lo que esperamos, y hay gracias, como les digo, aquí estamos el grupito, y podemos agarrar más firmas de todos los que vivimos en ese block.
That is what we are hoping, and we can collect more signatures from the residents of that block.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. We called John Perry's office.
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake. My name is Susie Aggrana, I live at 130 East 64th Street. We called John Perry's office last month, we were told that they called the real estate developer, and they were told that there are gonna be single-story apartment buildings. When construction started this week, the, our neighbors asked the workers, and they were told that they were being instructed to build several two-story buildings. The problem is that this lot is about one lot away from the fire, fire station, I think, number 32. And there's just, and there's a church across the street, there's simply not enough parking space for the firefighters and the residents to be able to safely move, you know, have park, have access to parking, or just, you know, to get out of their house without, you know, the fire sta, fire... The fire station, when they have emergency calls, they come out, you know, pretty high speeds, and there's just simply not enough space in that, that lot to accommodate parking for four cars, and, you know, the other houses are already there. I don't know who exactly we can, we can get help from, we, the real estate developers tell us one thing, John Perry told us last month that it was gonna be single-story apartments, now it's, it changed to duplexes, so we don't exactly know what to do. So any help we could get on this matter would be greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The very fine senior deputy for Councilwoman Perry, the ninth district, Marie Rumsey, is right there, gonna talk to the folks and try to give them some guidance. All right. Okay. So, Dow House dude, and John Walsh.
Well, I was just taking a little personal shower, you know. As a homeless person, you don't have readily available bathrooms, or showers, or anything. Everything is controlled by the city hall people, and there is only certain hours you can go there. And it's all full of baloney, dude. Everybody could have a place, you could have a lot less empty buildings, you could own a lot less land and buildings, which you are not legally equipped to own. The law does not allow you to own so much. Why don't you give it back to the people, instead of keeping everything for city hall? We live in a city of destitute people, where city hall has everything, and the people have nothing. Do you understand what nothing means?
You could lower your voice, you could lower your voice, Mr. Dude. Go on.
He needs more, it, 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 oh, I could, I don't know how long I can go, sir.
You know what I'm talking about.
Oh, I know what the hell you're talking about, do you know what I'm talking about? No! All you want is to keep everybody's money and give everybody nothing back. You keep creating ordinances to get more and more revenue for city hall. I'm running for District 11, I will be the biggest monkey wrench in your business, because you are doing business the wrong way. The people need services, and all you do is ride around in limousines and take expensive trips and do all that stuff. You do not deserve that.
Okay, Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, I am his campaign manager. First of all, go to Andrew Blankstein and put in TB, everybody, because everything I'm about to tell you is in the LA Times, but it's buried in the lead. We have a new strain of tuberculosis, never before seen, partially resistant to treatment, and it was born in Skid Row, it's there. The CDC has come in, it's, they're here, because the county has... It's there, here, because the county has no way of controlling it. I want people to realize that it is spreading through the schools, through children, and because they are the ones most likely to pick it up. They're opening a school, LAUSD, 9th Street, they're reopening it in Skid Row. Now, no one here gives a damn about these children. I understand we're getting some federal support. We're talking about a new strain of tuberculosis, killer tuberculosis. We will be putting all the information on our website, HollywoodHighlands.org. The county is totally will not deal with the issue, and the city is going to get blamed for it. You're going to get blamed for the killer tuberculosis that's spreading. And it will spread through buses, and it will spread through trains. And all the people on the West Side are interested in is to keep Hispanic children from these infected areas, out of West Side schools. This is racism. This is what's happening in this city. When it comes to A, vote no on the sales tax. No, no, a million times no. The rape spree continues in Hollywood. HollywoodHighlands.org, no on A.
Thank you. Okay, let's-- yes, Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to say, Mr. President, and for the people who may be listening, I had a meeting today with Dr. Jonathan Feeling of the Los Angeles County Health Department, who are aggressively working on all the challenges of tuberculosis in and around the central part of Los Angeles and other areas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, now, let's take up item seven. We've already satisfied general public comment card on that item in particular. I'm gonna go back. I know what I'm doing, okay?
And for clarification, Mr. President, item seven has been circulated for the members for their consideration.
Okay, so on that item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now, it's my understanding Mr. Reyes has a special?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I believe the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, Housing Department staff has determined that it cannot secure sufficient payments from the rental property owner at 1023 South Bonnie Bray for severe code violations uncovered by previous LAHD inspections. Because the tenants have been displaced, and the total amount of relocation assistance exceeds $100,000, immediate action is required for council to authorize the payments to provide immediate shelter for the displaced tenants. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, so, Mr. Reyes, before you speak, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues. I'm asking for an I vote. As indicated by our city attorney, this does require council action. It is over $100,000. The funds will be secured with a lien against the property, so there will not be an impact on the general fund. And I just want to make sure that was very clear. And secondly, these are 10 tenants living in dangerous conditions. The sooner we get them out of there, the safer we all will be in terms of addressing the needs of these families, and also addressing the priorities set by the task force that started back in September 2012. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's, on that item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Marine? No, we had all-- once the cards are not submitted, once the discussion has taken place. Mr. Help, would you--
It's a special. You're not allowed to speak.
No. He should-- no, Mr. Walsh, I've been told by the city attorney that in this case, you should be afforded the opportunity, because it was a late submission. So that's my mistake. So, Mr. Marine, if you could step aside, and Mr. Walsh, I made a mistake. So, Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. For purposes of identification only, anybody but Garcetti for mayor. We support 100% Mr. Reyes. We support the Brown Act, and we're very happy, since we support Carmen Trutanus, the city attorney seems to be ruling in our favor. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Again, and, Mr. Walsh, I apologize for that. Okay, Mr. Marine? We're back to general public comment.
Yes, we're back to Hackland Colamo U's, and whereby it shows how much the pay of craftsmen is reduced, and how much the city doesn't want to account for. As you know, on October 26, 2010, your city attorney told you about the rules of parity and state and federal constitutions in contracting. Now, it's right there in black and white how much money was sheltered. Every cent that's not shown on the paycheck, on my government's paycheck biweekly, was sheltered. It's shown in Hackland Colamo U's. Now, I don't know why anybody from this council would be running for reelection when they have no intent to accurate the account for the time and money of others. It was clear, you know, my wife worked in the bank. She's got securities license and annuities, and you just can't take money and put it in the bank, and you don't expect to get it back. Hackland Colamo U show every cent that was sheltered in union banks, and the 10% that the city agreed to personally hold without providing it to a third party. Now, you gotta account for that money, and it takes the whole body to account for that money. This body authorized those deductions, and this body has to authorize the rollover of those deductions, or the payment of those deductions, to satisfy IRS regulations. Now, you know you're in violation of the rules of parity, IRS accounting regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Marine, or Mr. Leo Terrell.
Thank you, members of the council. Today-- yesterday, I filed a lawsuit against the City of Los Angeles. I filed a lawsuit against the City of Los Angeles because this council drew lines, council lines, by using race as a factor. Now, without mentioning any names, when a council member says, by drawing these lines, it will ensure you a black seat for 30 years, that is against the law. You cannot use race to draw lines. You know that, and I know that. And what is so embarrassing about this, you have diluted the Korean and Asian community. You have taken members of the constituents of the 8th District to ensure that there will be a black council member in the 10th District? That is against the law. You know, the Supreme Court today is voting, is hearing arguments on the Voting Rights Act. Shame on this city when minorities disenfranchise minorities. This is embarrassing. You have-- what you have done is you have destroyed the chances of Asian community voting in a unison, or to vote for an Asian politician. You have tried to destroy or dilute the 8th District. You have tried to ensure that a black council member get elected over and over again in the 10th District because of race? Now, if I'm not crazy, there's a guy in the White House who relied on people of all colors to get elected. He didn't rely upon one class of people. So let me sit here and tell you this. As a civil rights attorney, for 20-plus years, I'm proud to file this lawsuit. But let me be very, very clear. Don't rely on those lines in 2015, because it is my intent to make sure those lines are redrawn pursuant to a court order, not city commissions that are designed--
Thank you.
--to benefit politicians.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Okay, Mr. Huizar, didn't you want-- we continued an item for two weeks, but it's been brought to my attention that maybe you wanted three weeks or something? Maybe we can clear that up now.
No, thank you, Mr. President. We were working on the three weeks, but we'll just keep it at the two weeks from now. Building and Safety informed us they may need an additional week, but we're gonna try to do it within two weeks. We'll keep it the same. Thank you for checking.
Okay. And on item seven, forthwith? Okay, Mr. Clerk, is there any more business before this committee?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Well, consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, members? Mr. Labange?
Mr. President, this morning--
In fact, hold one second, Mr. Labange. Mr. Sargent, could you see what Mr. Dude wants? Back to you, Mr. Labange.
This morning, the Board of Public Works of the President Capri Maddox had the Rory Shaw Award given to Dr. Carol Armstrong. As you may recall, Rory Shaw, Los Angeles City engineer, lost his life in the early 2000s with a flood in the East San Fernando Valley, and a storm drain collapsed. The highlight of that name now bears the Engineer of the Year, and Dr. Armstrong, who those of you who are working with the river issues know of her work, was so awarded. It was a very nice program that they had in Public Works, and I want to salute Dr. Armstrong for the Board of Public Works, and always remember the name of Rory Shaw. And always with that, the work that our councilman, Mr. Cardenas, now Congressman Cardenas, did in the aftermath of that tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. If we could get everyone in the council to please rise for adjourning motions? If we could all please rise, everybody in the council chambers, please rise. Those of you that are seated in the back, if you could please rise for adjourning motions, please stand up. Please stand up. Adjourning motions, members? No, Mr. Labange?
We remember everybody every day, but as before you conclude the meeting, we just got the Ontario High School. There's no adjourning members program today, so I wanted to catch you before we close. May I--
Yes, go right ahead, Mr.--
Let's welcome the Ontario High School, came in here by Metro League, young students to learn about Los Angeles, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Adjourning motions, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Tom Sisson, longtime employee of the CAO's office, who passed away while vacationing in Mexico. He was born in September 1938, spent his early career, early years in Greeley, Colorado. He began his city career in the CAO's office in 1960, and spent his entire career there, where he retired as head of the Employee Relations Division. He is one of the founding members of the city's Joint Labor Management Benefit Committee. He also served as the chief of the CAO's financial group, and was instrumental in crafting the city's budget during difficult years following the passage of Prop 13. He retired in 1997 to Southern Creek, California, after 37 exemplary years of service in the city of LA. He was preceded in death by his wife Jude, who was his high school sweetheart. He's survived by his son Tom, and his daughter Stacy, and Darlene, and his much-loved girlfriend. Tom will be deeply missed by all who were lucky enough to know and work with him.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any more adjourning motions? See none, members of this council has adjourned.